We're going to go ahead and get started with the work session. We already know that we've got one person not here. So the first item on our work session is the divestment procedures that Doug and I have been working on. And then we shared it with Doug Flornoy also so that he could review it. And since he's Chair of Property, and so I'm just going to let Doug go through it. And hopefully you saw the pages that are attached.
And if you didn't, there's a note in here from Jenna Savaroski from Allers &amp; Cooney in regards to how we should go about the divestment of our property. And there are so many different scenarios when it comes to the city acquiring property and then us getting rid of it. Some people give us the property. Sometimes we have to condemn the property, which we had a conversation today. And sometimes we have to take the property so that we can gain control of it and rehab that property or we sell it. But in here, the first page from Allers quotes Iowa Code Section 364.7, which requires the city to set a public hearing on the proposed disposal of the property. Interest in published a notice of the public hearing four to 20 days before the hearing date. And then it talks about how we go about that and then how we get rid of the property. If the property is located within the urban renewal area, the Iowa Code Section 403.8 requires that a reasonable competitive bidding procedures be completed before the sale. And the real estate requires a notice of intention to accept the contract for sale by the city and the City Council at least 30 days before the contract is accepted. So then we created, this was a lot more simple now than it started to be. It was like, what, 10 pages?
And the whole idea, really sorry Doug to interrupt you, but was to really get this in a form which was easy to use every time and we didn't have to think about, okay, what's our next step, you know? And so it's just easy. It's right there for anybody at City Hall or a council member to look at and go, oh yeah, this is our next step.
Yeah, and the largest issue is that we were trying to overcome was the fact of, you know, if we have a piece of property and can it be rehabilitated? Can we remodel it? And then if that's the case, then do we sell it to a contractor and, you know, have them rehabilitate it? And then do we give it to them because we want to make the property better? Or do we sell it to them? How does that work? Or is the property in such bad condition that we need to have it torn down and then we tear it down and then we sell a lot or give a lot? You know, there's all of this dynamic in there. And then we had sort of this wheel of all the hidden costs that a lot of people don't think about that the city goes through when we do have a piece of property or we are taking care. We actually tore down a house that we still don't own property. So we're assessing their taxes and try to get some sort of relief that way. But when the initial process begins, you know, first they're having a conversation with us of, I want to get rid of it, or you need to clean it up, or we're going to take it conversation. Then once that actually occurs, then we engage our city attorney and we start the procedures of condemnation. And we've got our code enforcement out there, you know, writing citations. Then we take them to court. And then once we get some sort of direction from the court system, so there's legal fees, there's, you know, administrative fees, there's all of the stuff that we're trying to track and accumulate, then once we decide that we're going to tear down the house, then we actually have to go in and have the water disconnected, the utilities disconnected, so that they can go in there and do their work. And so that's kind of, I think, the best way that we can handle this. But when these sorts of properties come our way, in fact, John will most likely talk about some other properties that are headed our way that we're going to have to deal with and we just don't know what to do with them. So when we take it to Property Committee, we can say, this is how we're going to start. And then they can make it a little easier decision and then give us a better direction.
So that's all the intent of this is just to help us clearly work through the process. And so if you have any questions?
Your Honor, may we mention one thing too? In front of all of these steps that Jenna spelled out, about every year or two, we have something in front of the council where you decide to vacate something because it's not necessary for the city, it's not useful to the city. Sometimes we vacate alleys, sometimes we vacate streets, sometimes we vacate a part of a parking lot. Sometimes we give up a whole property for a reason that isn't related necessarily to money, but it is related to economic development. For instance, when we did Red Cannon several years ago, we agreed to turn a property over that really, it was sort of a liability to the city, but when we turned it over, the intention was that the person that was doing a business development would develop the property. Didn't work out very well in the end as far as there's no business there right now, but for years it was in progress and we thought that made sense. Plus, it was allowed under the state constitution says we can't give away our property except, you know, economic development is a legitimate purpose for us to share a property with somebody and not treat it as a giveaway. So this outline as far as divesting, those are the steps. As far as the decision making go into the first resolution, as far as vacating the property, I'm sure that Becca has a wealth of things in her computer as far as different vacating resolutions and we do over at our shop too. But beyond that, when you get into the divesting process, this is pretty good summary that there can be a lot of different choices for us. So all I wanted to say about it was to lead into this.
Okay, great. The next thing is LMI funds. And I just wanted to update you on some conversation that I had with Matt Noman, or Noman, over at the Housing Trust Fund and through the Area 15. So I talked to him a couple of weeks ago. Hang on here, I've got too many papers in front of me. And the conversation was around, they have a program through the Housing Trust Fund where they give these no interest loans to people for $12,000. And the idea was that maybe we could give $3,000 to a project that maybe $12,000 isn't quite enough, but if they had $15,000, they could get the job done. So that's where the conversation centered around. And as you remember, we passed a resolution last month or the month before that said that may be something that we could use our LMI funds for. So the question that I had for Matt was, okay, if we wanted to do this, how would we go about it? Would we do an application? Would we accept their application? So that's kind of where the conversation started. And so what he told me was that most of the people who apply for those funds are usually doing a heating or cooling, you know, a new furnace, a new AC, or it could be a new roof. Those are the most that they have. And a lot of that is because, you know, let's say their heater doesn't work, they've got somebody in there to repair it, and that repairman says, hey, you know, this furnace is shot, you need a new one. And the person says, I can't afford a new one. So they get referred over to Area 15 on that kind of project. So that happens again with air conditioning and roofing. So those are the big things that they use those funds for. And so then what happens is, once they get approved, they go through, you know, they have to put in an application. Apparently, two checks are cut, 50% to the contractor and 50% to the homeowner. So the contractor has money to get started, the homeowner, when the job is complete, then pays the contractor the rest of the money. And then that loan stays on a lien, basically, until they sell that property. And once that property is sold, that amount comes back to Area 15. So some of the questions he asked me, is this a loan or a grant? Do they have to pay off the loan if the house is sold within so many years? Which, you know, I didn't know how to answer that.
It's forgivable.
Yeah, because we didn't have, we haven't had these discussions. So again, we were just talking about different possibilities. And one of the things he said was to me was, you know, we probably could set up, he said they can receive actual proceeds or they can receive municipal funds towards a project. He said, we could receive funds from the city of Fairfield and then those monies would only be used for people in Fairfield. So I thought that was interesting. And so we left it there and he was going to talk to Chris Bowers, you know, Area 15, and see what they thought they could do. And so he and I had an email back and forth today. And that centered around, he was asking me, you know, what our dollar amount is, what rules or legislation define uses, restrictions, and estimate how many dollars. Well, you know, I basically said, hey, we have a resolution that talks about that, using LMI funds for potentially something like that. And then under the Urban Renewal State Code 403, that's where that comes into play too. So then later this afternoon, he wrote back to me and basically said, let's see, they would most likely agree to accepting funds from Fairfield and earmarking those funds to be used exclusively on LMI housing projects in Fairfield. But then he brought up looking at State Code 43.22, the wording under 2D says, "Housing fund established by the municipality is somewhat ambiguous." And then his next question is, does identifying an existing housing fund that serves Fairfield count or must Fairfield create a new housing fund? So he says he's asking Iowa Finance Authority about the same question. So then he asked me if there's a deadline and I said, no. And, you know, I kind of gave him a rough estimate of how much LMI funds we have, but not that we're going to use all of that for this type of thing. It would just be probably a smaller portion of that because we've got other things that we want to do too. So those are ultimately the conversations we're having. John, if you wouldn't mind looking at, when you have a chance to look at 403.22, and I can forward you his email and say, do we need to create something new here or is what we have okay?
Couple of things. Right now, there is a housing foundation being set up inside FIDA.
Right.
And I think they've had some back and forths with Chris over there too. But the idea is it would be a 501(c)(3) and it would be a cooperative effort with some of the local plant owners and so forth to have more housing for people that are commuting right now to work here. And that type of housing fund and having a resource where you can turn and start building a small subdivision or something like that consistent with an employment site is one idea that's going on that I know is talked about in the FIDA board. But another part of this-
And those might be additional grants that we would give out here, matching grant.
And the 403 sections that have to do with public purpose use of funds for development is where you go with this. And almost every time we do a TIF, we have some paragraphs in it to talk about our continued commitment to LMI. And so when you get an article in the paper about a prefabricated home coming in, we've helped with the LMI already by selling the lot to the Development Association for basically a price that's not basically a price that we're having a bidding war over. We're selling it for what we think is reasonable and fair, but at the same time, we're not turning it out there for other people to be coming after. They can come to our public hearing on the disposal of it. But so far, we haven't had that kind of a bidding contest over any of the properties that we've got to use for these LMI things. The property over on South Sixth Street will be soon having another one of these prefab homes coming in. And I think there's three or four others that are projected out there as soon as we can get those kinds of homes coming in. I was going to mention in the register on Sunday, there's three pages about housing as far as a project in Des Moines, proposed housing strategies can change the trajectory of your community. It talks about Des Moines, but when you get into the third page of the article, about every other paragraph is about the ways that you plan things so that LMI is included. So our commitment to LMI each time we do a TIF, and we've been pretty strong on using TIF in this community, those LMIs that are mentioned in there, I don't know what the balance in our LMI fund is and so forth, but we're already doing what 403 envisions, I think, regularly.
So if I digress a little bit, let me just walk this through and see if you kind of like this idea. And I guess I didn't quite finish my thoughts.
No, I didn't.
But let's say that somebody from Fairfield applies and they get approved for the $12,000 and we match $3,000. We send it over and then $15,000, their project's finished, okay? So then they have that loan. And then 10 years later, they sell the house, they pay off that loan. So the Housing Trust Fund gets their, the Housing Trust Fund actually can get the $15,000, $3,000 which was ours, and then it can then be loaned out again.
Right.
So again, we could decide we don't want it paid back or that's forgivable, or we could say, no, reuse it, you know?
I have a couple of small towns that have, after they get about halfway on the repayment, they start a scaled back apportioned payback plan. And so the last five years, nobody pays back 100% anymore. They get a discount. The longer they wait before they sell, I think average properties around here, I'm not the Realtor in the crowd, but I know there's probably some statistics aren't there tearing about this in town, seven or eight years is the average life expectancy of a homeownership before you roll into another property. So if you're somebody who's improved your home and used LMI funds, odds are that you maybe not go the full 10 years or farther as far as that. If you've gone six years of it and you're about three-fourths the way through your repay, it wouldn't surprise a lot of the different programs that have worked on this would forgive part of that for that last couple of years. And I've done that in Birmingham and Stockport have had this type of program for smaller funds. But anyway, I know board supervisors had this for a period of time and ran out of money on it. But I know I did a couple of mortgage percentage forgiveness things up at Pleasant Plain that our board approved years ago. So it can work that way, but that's totally our discretion.
Yeah.
You know, if we want to do something like that and show people our sum reward for faithfully paying and so forth, we'll have several of these out there in the community before long.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to update you on conversations and have you think about it.
If we wrap our money in with their money, are we going to have to, to keep it simple, use the same practices that they're using in terms of recollecting the money?
Well, that does make it easy.
And that's really be very complicated for the homeowner to figure out.
Plus, what like limits do they impose on people? I don't know. I saw this was on the study session, I guess maybe we're not having the length of conversation that I thought we were going to. But I printed out some different town policies that they have about utilizing LMI funds and for low moderate income housing set aside funds. I've got Newton, I've got Comanche, and I have Bluegrass. So Comanche kind of does what you were talking about, John, where they have like a deferred loan. So if you don't sell the house after two years, then you're only paying, you know, 60% back of the note or whatever. But eventually, it is total forgiveness of the loan. But I don't know, I just, I think it would be really worthwhile for us not only to think about demoing houses that are in disrepair and building new houses, but also how we're going to kind of extend the lifespan of the housing stock that we have if we're able to, you know, to help people. So I feel very strongly about that and I was excited to see this on the agenda.
So if you glean, you know, really good ideas out of there, you know, we can talk about them further. So I just wanted to, again, update you on my conversations with Matt over there.
One more question.
Yes.
How much business do they do in Fairfield?
Well, he didn't tell me, so I can't tell you. I know that they have high visibility in Atumwa. And he said, because of contractors that are looking for roofing and, you know, they have a lot more housing than we do. And so, you know, they got, you know, heating, air conditioning people that are regularly referring.
So it's really the contractors that are leading this?
Yeah, sounds like it.
That's probably a good idea because they're the ones that make the connections.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we just got a couple of minutes, so I want to make sure we talk about internal workdays. I'm going to let you talk about it, I got to go get some water. This was Terry's idea, so.
So internal workdays came out from the Personnel Committee meeting just as a chance to give the staff a break from answering phones and answering questions and, you know, not being able to get work done. I'm trying to think of what we talked about, maybe just like starting with a half day once a month to start with. The City Hall would be closed, but the employees would be here working so that they could catch up on, you know, anything that's pressing, anything that they need to get done. I'm sure everyone's aware that when someone does a public request of records, there's a timeline that they have to follow. So anytime that someone's spending time doing that, it takes away from the work that they're scheduled to be doing already. And I just think this would be a helpful tool for our personnel within City Hall. So I'm open for ideas or discussion about it.
Maybe we should have staff come back to us with a recommendation of what they'd want in terms of internal workdays. So we have something to-
How much do they need?
Yeah, yeah. How much they need, what they want.
Yeah, we started about talking with a half day once a month.
Every day.
Do you want to get up and say anything? Okay, that's fine.
You know, we understand that we're here for the public though too. So we went one to, our only hard part, we were talking about the half day. We were talking about how do you pick that day? I mean, it's not like, we have billing four times a week. We read meters four times a week. I mean, there's just, I don't know how we would pick it.
Well, different people have different schedules in regard to whether they're ahead or behind their workload.
Right, that's true too. It would take a lot of brainstorming, I think, for us to, it may be more the, if we even discussed at more of a department level too, to see about if there's something that would make more sense as a possibility.
Well, you're expressing, Terry, that the council is open to that, to further discussion if you have some suggestions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else on that?
No.
Go ahead.
When we're done with this meeting, I just wanted to say-
Okay, so we'll take a one-minute break, quick break, to get set up for the actual meeting. meeting. I'm going to call a meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Tohill.
Here.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Caness.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have one agenda change, the resolution on the second page, temporary easement for Sunrise Trail. We're not quite ready for that, so we're deleting that. That'll come back next time, I assume. Any other changes?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to have a conversation at some point when it was appropriate about the committee and board reports, the name Ad-Hoc Committee for Community Engagement.
Okay. Let's wait till we get down there.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about that. Okay, um, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the June 23, 2025 council meeting, approval of the July 3, 2025 payroll in the amount of $175,427.83. Resolution authorizing funds transfers, approval of liquor license for the Walton Club, approval of ACH payment at the Department of Revenue in the amount of $15,962.36, approval of special claims in the amount of $63,257.07, approval of total claims in the amount of $1,718,793. One of those claims is contingent upon approval of the change order, which we'll get to. And then the claims above $75,000 include Alliant Energy for $91,063.25, Kristner Contracting for $618,874.75 for the fire station, and Metron Farner, Farner, is that how you say that? $193,696.37. It's at supplies.
It's meters, water meters.
Meters, okay. I meant to ask that before.
And then step three.
Say that again?
And step three.
And, oh, okay.
And, no, not on that. I mean, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, okay.
Over 75.
Oh, step three's missing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Step three's over 75,000. It's $329,509.09.
Oh, thank you. I missed that, because I looked through.
Woodruff.
Yes.
Okay. May I ask about that Alliant Energy bill? Is that standard?
Sometimes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have months that it's over 75,000.
I see, probably summer months specifically.
And we missed two weeks of council, so this is three weeks, this is three weeks of bills instead of two weeks of bills. So it kind of falls as a bigger.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Caness. Discussion?
I did review claims, and they seemed in order.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? No, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Caness.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Approved unanimously. Under public form and appearances, we have James Danaher. This is regarding a water and sewer bill.
Yes, good evening. Paul Miller here, is counsel on behalf of James Danaher. You know, got a document for all of you. In case any of you haven't heard, James had a water bill for one month for a little over $42,000, including sewer. So it's been a little.
I can pass it down. I'll just pass it down. I think I got eight copies there.
I think, Mr. Miller, we already have this. Do we not do this already?
Do you have it in the packet? I have, I have no knowledge.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I guess it is the same.
On or around May 7 of this year, James Danaher had requested that his, the water to his fountain be turned on. He has, I believe he has three, maybe four stop boxes on his property, and one of them is to, is for a fountain that recycles water, that it be turned on. He turns it, has it turned off in the fall, and then turned back on in the spring, just in case there's any type of freeze or anything. He doesn't want that water running continuously. In the city, on or about May 7, turned that water on. Around June 2, Jim was notified that there was an abnormally large water usage in the city. The Water Works Department came out and shut off valves in the water pit to the fountain. On June 20, Jim and myself, we met with the Water Department here, with the Utilities Committee, the Water Department, the Sewer Department, and with questions regarding just what happened, and all of a sudden, he received a utility bill for $42,000. I think originally, he was sent a bill for $15,000. Sewer came out, the Sewer Department came out and determined that, yes, this water was also flowing into the wastewater system, and then therefore, we got the $42,000 bill. It was mainly kind of a question, an inquiry from everybody to try to figure out what was going on here, that all of a sudden, a $42,000 bill, that was, that was a real shock. At that time, plausible solutions were, hey, possibly, somebody, you know, maybe it was vandalism, maybe somebody got into your, your water pit and turned this water on. Nobody had a real answer, because Jim and his brother who works with him had not been in the water pit to turn the water on. So the only thing that happened, to my client's knowledge, was the city came out on May 7 and turned on the water box to allow water to flow to this fountain. And so it happens, that same date, the excessive water usage began, if you look at, if you look at the water reports.
Mr. Miller, did the city come out at his, at Mr. Danaher's request?
No, they didn't come out until approximately 30 days later, when they realized that there was an abnormal water usage.
So when the city came out on May 7, May 7 to turn on the water?
Correct.
Was that at Mr. Danaher's request?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
But they didn't go in the pit?
Not to our knowledge, not to our knowledge. We don't know for sure.
Would you say pit, are you talking about the stop box?
There's a stop box, and then there's a pit below the fountain that's big enough for someone to crawl into.
I see.
Not crawl into, walk into.
They call it a vault, or.
A vault.
Yes.
That's one of our ways.
They can walk into that. And anyway, at the meeting, on June 20, trying to get some explanations, answers, trying to figure out what happened, we walked away asking, hey, all right, get us the daily meter usage for that time period. Ultimately, the City Utility Department wasn't able to get us that usage chart on around July 9. I can't say exactly. You know, they got to it when they could, we're not faulting the city when they were able to get to it. When we received those notes, there was a, and it should, if it's not a part of your package, it's a part of the notes that we got, it has to do with the, the May 7 notes kept by the city, that they had went out and turned on the meter box, and it states that JL met man in white jumpsuit valve before meter was turned on. Do not know who that is. Somebody in a white jumpsuit that he, that JL, I don't know who JL is, met with somebody before the valve was turned on.
Something back in the packet that was given to us.
That's our employees to get.
What is it, so, Mr. Miller, what it says in the packet, back of the packet that?
This is our packet.
Our packet.
Not the one they gave us.
This is signed by Jason Loveland, I believe the city water employee. He says, as I stood up, I was addressed by Mr. Danaher, he asked me to turn the water on. I said, yes, it's on before the meter. This is on May 7. He didn't ask me to leave the lid open, leave the lid to the pit open so he could go down there himself. I obliged and walked back, walked to my service truck. I then started filling out the service order while I waited for my radio reader to pick up a current usage reading. After I got all the information submitted in the work order, I drove away.
He's stating James, or what was the gentleman's name?
Jason Loveland.
Jason Loveland.
Yes.
Met with Jim personally to turn on the stop box?
As I stood up, I was addressed by Mr. Danaher. He asked if I turned the water on. I said, yes, it's on before the meter. He then asked me to leave the lid to the pit open so he could go down there himself.
Okay. Well, I can assure you that Mr. Danaher, James, did not talk to anybody that day when the pit was opened.
Could it have been another Danaher, maybe his brother?
Well, he's got a brother, if I'm wrong, it's not John, Don?
Tom.
Tom, Tom. To our knowledge, Tom was never in that pit prior to that, prior to that stop box being turned on afterwards, until they were alerted the water was turned on. So we're not for sure what they're referring to, when somebody in a white jumpsuit. And to our knowledge, Tom was never in the vault to check the water valve. So therefore, we got questions regarding this $42,000 bill. Who turned on the valves, or what they did in that, in the vault, the pit underneath the, or next to the, the fountain? Furthermore, had somebody been there to turn on valves, are they going to allow, I guess, what's the daily water uses? They would have been there at the time to see 12,000 gallon of water, you know, pouring in, what's that, 500 gallon, 5 gallon, 100 gallon a minute at least. Why would they have not shut it off if somebody actually went in that pit? Why would Tom, or Jim, or anybody allow 12,000 a gallon of water per day flow down their meter pit at their expense, and then 30 days later, say they know nothing about it? So it just seems kind of odd. I guess there's still questions here as to what exactly occurred. At this point, we're not willing to pay this bill. We're hoping that the city is willing to turn the water on and try, and ultimately try to figure out what happened here. But it makes no sense that someone on, anybody, I didn't know who JL was until you brought up his name, and Mr. Danaher's brother, he has no knowledge of going to a pit that day, and he'll flatly deny that, or further having any contact with, with a gentleman named JL to turn on the water, and then continue to allow the water to flow for 30 days.
Do we need to confirm, have Jason go out there and say, this is what I did?
This was all hashed out in the Water and Sewer Committee, I thought. We had the whole Sewer Department, the Water Department, and Mr. Danaher, and Mr. Miller.
They were here, but we had no, at that time, nobody brought it to our attention that, according to these notes, that JL met in white jumpsuit valve before meter was turned on. Nobody told us that there was anybody else there when that meter was turned on.
Oh, I thought they had during that meeting, I'm sorry.
What was we viewing in the Water and Sewer Committee meeting?
We went over, well, frankly, the information we had was the information that Mr. Danaher had provided, and the information that the Water and Sewer employees shared with us that day. And we covered a lot of information, and we talked about it for how long? A while, anyway.
Yeah, the Water Department turned the valve on, didn't touch the, the discharge section at all. That would have been on the 7th. I thought, and I could be wrong, but I thought Tom was there when they showed up. I thought they said they spoke with Tom, who let him down into the pit, showed him where the vault or the pit, the vault was. And he went down and turned the water on, and that was all he did. He went back out when they saw the excessive usage and turned the water off.
I know that Jared Goodrich showed up to turn off the water, and Tom would have showed him, but there was no testimony at the hearing, to my knowledge, that Tom was there when the water was turned on.
I know Tom was there at one point, like, so.
Yeah, there was definitely discussion of the condition that the pit and also a partially open valve was in when the water was turned off, that might have resulted in some of the leaking, but I can't tell you for certain. I don't think, I don't think it was ever brought up exactly who was there when the water was turned on.
Well, do we need to refer this back to Water and Sewer Committee, just go over again? And maybe they all, y'all need to go out there and look at what he turned? I mean, I don't know, I'm just suggesting. To make sure he didn't turn the wrong thing? I mean, it does, open it and climb down. So is the shut off valve in the pit?
Yes, I understand it is, yes.
Well, I can't say for sure I haven't been out there, but I think there's a stop box at the curb, and the meter's in the pit. The city has their side of a shut off valve, and there's a shut off valve on the other side of the, the meter, and from the sounds of it, the city side is frozen, you cannot do anything with it. But we don't, we don't believe, nobody from Mr. Danaher's house was in that pit during or as a part of the shut off.
So they.
Can I ask a question?
They did turn the water on, on the city side, it says on this.
Correct, but according to this, somebody was in the, was in the water pit at the same time.
Right, and he was the one that turned it on, on the city side of the water, it says on, on our report here.
He turned it on, on the water side, on the city side?
Around 10:30 AM, I arrived at the property to just reconnect. I walked over past the, down the meter, meter pit cover. I opened it and climbed down. I located the meter near the base of the ladder. I found the valve before, the valve is easy to discover, is the meter has a flow arrow indication of what, the direction of water flow.
Over drain.
I turned the valve on and climbed back out of the pit.
So there's probably our smoke again, he turned on the wrong valve.
Well, it says he turned the one on before the meter, so that would have been the city.
Jared Goodrich said that he couldn't turn that, that valve. That's what his testimony was at our utilities meeting. So if he turned on a valve.
If that one was off, then it wouldn't have, the other one wouldn't have been able to turn on anyway.
Well, that one was never able to close, according to Jared Goodrich at our meeting. So somebody who got down in that pit, they turned on a valve, they turned, they actually turned on the valve, they didn't, which allowed flow into that. which allowed flow into the pit. On the, on the customer's side.
I don't know how to resolve it unless you.
I don't, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I absolutely feel for you because this is horrific.
Well, it sounds like according, I haven't seen your public notes, but it sounds.
We're not a profit center, so I mean, you know, if we forgive anything here, everybody else in town ends up having to pay the difference because, I mean, it's nothing that comes out of a profit center. So, I do feel for you. We have never done it in the past. I am willing to go back to committee if that's what you guys want us to do and look into it further. I have no problem with that.
Was, Mr. Tohno, it sounds like according to your own notes that the cities provided you, if somebody went down in the pit and turned on a valve, they turned on the valve on Mr. Danaher's side, and that would not be his fault.
At the request, they turned on a valve at the request of.
And Jared Goodrich told us that the city valve was frozen. They could not turn it off. It was already turned on.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. So JL is clearly Jason Loveland. Where did the information about the white jumpsuit person come into play? Does our water department wear white jumpsuits?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I guess where did that information about a white jumpsuit come from?
That's in the notes that we were provided, which is.
Who's SF? Shelby Ford.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that Jason was at that meeting. I think it was just Jared. And it'd be probably worth a conversation.
Okay, so if, counsel, you opened and have taken it back to Water and Sewer.
So the person involved in turning the valve wasn't at the meeting?
Correct. Sounds like it.
That seems strange to me.
The person involved shutting the valve off was there.
They, they, they didn't know what date it started, I guess. So they went back and found this information after that meeting. So.
So valve was turned on on the 7th, and then someone went and turned off the valve, and that solved the problem. So the valve that was turned on.
We're asking in the meantime if the city would have leniency to at least be willing to turn, turn the water back on until this is resolved.
We had offered, as per the committee, the three-year contract, and that council agreed upon, and that was not signed.
Was not signed?
Correct.
Okay.
In my, in my direction, I don't want my client admitting some type of fault here. And I know Doug has told me your client's not admitting fault here, but I think we've learned more information tonight, even more positive, more information that my client may have nothing to do with this whatsoever, so.
But I think we had also explained that even if they were to make, Mr. Danaher was to make those payments and agree to that contract, if there was some sort of resolution that council felt that they needed to give the money back, it would be credited back to that account. And that would be a way to have the water on.
Rebecca, I don't disagree with you. We're just saying, look at the size of this bill. A lot of people come before you with an $800 bill, not a $42,000 bill.
Well, if he's, I have no problem. If he's willing to make the monthly difference now, I guess I wouldn't have any problem turning the water back on. I mean, we absolutely do that. And if it turns out that this does get reversed somehow, then that will be refunded back to him at that point. So I mean, you're talking a little, maybe right around a thousand a month or something is what it would come to. So if he's willing to make that for a month or so, until we resolve this.
I'll let you guys.
I mean, that's, that's my.
Is this water for a fountain?
Oh, waterfall fountain, yes.
Water for a fountain?
Yes.
So we should resolve it before we turn it back on?
But, but if they're making the payments, I mean, if they're making the payments, we'll turn it on anyway.
Does Water and Sewer want to review it again?
We can.
Do you want to?
Seems to me it'd be prudent to take some photos.
To at the very least, have a meeting where we are talking to Mr. Loveland.
So, and are we only talking about turning the water back on to the fountain?
Just the fountain.
Just the fountain. Well, okay, I was thinking of the whole property, but I forgot there's more than one stop box to the property.
Right, this is not water for,
Right.
you know, survival of the fountains. So we should probably resolve, I think we should, I think, stay with our original offer. The offer's not been accepted. We await, we have it reviewed by the Water and Sewer, and if at some point it comes to a resolution, perhaps we'll turn the water to the fountain on, but not yet.
Okay, so can someone make a motion to move it back to Water and Sewer, please?
So moved.
Moved by Kness. It's our second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee? And let's just make sure that Mr. Loveland is at that meeting.
And I really would advise having some pictures taken of who turned, like what valve Jason turned off, what valve Jared turned, or sorry, on, what valve Jared turned off. Just so we make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, and even if we have to go out there, we all have to go out there to see it. You know, so, okay. Next up is Bob Bergerson.
Cheryl is here also with me, so. So everyone has our application for our event next Thursday, 4:00 to 5:30. And I have a short statement that I'd like to read to you, which is from a posthumous letter by Representative John Lewis.
Written while he was live.
Written while he was live. Did not write it after he was dead. That would be a really good trick. So it says, I have permission to read it?
Yeah, you got five minutes.
Each generation must do its part to help build what we call the beloved community. A nation, a world, and society at peace with itself. Ordinary people with extraordinary vision can redeem the soul of America by getting in what I call good trouble, necessary trouble. Voting and participating in the democratic process are key. The vote is the most powerful nonviolent change agent you have in a democratic society. In my life, I have done all I can to demonstrate that the way of peace, the way of love and nonviolence, is the most excellent way. Now it is your turn to let freedom ring. When historians pick up their pens to write the story of the 21st century, let them say that it was your generation who laid down the heavy burdens of hate at last, and that peace finally triumphed over violence, aggression, and war. So I say to you, walk with the wind, brothers and sisters, and let the spirit of peace and the power of everlasting love be your guide. So that is the animating spirit behind our event. And I, we are here to answer any questions you have about the nature of the event.
Any questions, counsel?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
But you say every Thursday?
Well, there's a little bit, little bit of a misunderstanding. This application is for this one event.
Okay.
We will be on the square, a number of us, like we were last Thursday, but there's no PR. We're just standing, exercising our rights to pull signs. This, this is the only event where there'll be a public address system.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Kness, second by Gandy. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, sign. There you go.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Thank you. Ed Malloy from Grove Fairfield.
Good evening, counsel. Just wanted to quickly extend an invitation to you to meet with the executive team from Kading Properties. We spoke about Kading several months ago when we were talking about housing options. This is a company out of Des Moines that builds rental communities. It's, it's a competitive process to to get them to come and visit the community and do a deep dive into the housing needs, the economics, the cultural activities, things like that. They're excited to be coming here. We're going to have them for about six hours. And at the end of the day, at 2:30, in at the Arts and Convention Center, we're going to have a forum for them to be introduced to major employers and to answer, give their presentation and answer any questions. There's, there's a, Jason, a listing of communities where they are in I mean, in Iowa. I just wanted to kind of show that. They've already built a number of places. The thing that I like about the group is that their investment is essentially from beginning to end. They manage the entire project. They've got a great reputation for being, you know, good, good managers, and they bring a quality product to the town. So we're looking forward to their visit. The mayor will join us early in the day and hopefully join us for the entire bus tour of places that we're going to have them see. And again, I'm not sure how many communities we're competing against for this particular year, but I know that there are, you know, a number of them, and they're very excited about visiting Fairfield. So, simply put, extending an invitation, if you can make it, 2:30 on Thursday afternoon, the 17th, at the Arts and Convention Center.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Thank you.
Looking forward to the day. Okay, next is Mark Dwyer.
Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to speak. Now that I've seen the agenda, it might be redundant that I'm speaking because I see you're going to talk about all the things that I was going to talk about. But I'll make my statement anyway. From my reading of the Iowa code regarding the filling of city council seats, excuse me, I gather there's two options. One option is that the council can appoint someone, and the second option is that they can choose to have an election to fill the empty seat. And in the interest of full transparency, and since I think there's still a fair amount of time remaining in that term of the vacancy, I want to encourage the council to opt for an election. And at the very least, whatever you decide to do, I want to urge the council to widely broadcast the fact that there's a need for representation from the third council, from the third ward, and, and provide that ward with an opportunity for choosing their own representation. And just in case anybody's wondering, no, I don't want to run for that seat. I don't live in the third ward, so it's not an option for me. So thank you, and I see you're going to talk about it anyway. I think, I hope it'll be an election, and thank you for your time.
Great. So we'll talk about when we get down there.
I was actually thinking it would be nice to hold a special election, and I did notice that the action item is simply on the topic of publishing a notice of appointment. So I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we hold a special election instead. I do think it's wise to let the people of Fairfield.
Do you mind we hang till we, till we get down to that point and we'll, we'll go through the process so it's more clear? Because I think there's, it's not quite clear enough yet at this point.
If you think it would be appropriate to provide some more insight?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay, so let's move down to the first action item. This is the change order on the fire station. Oh, okay.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Russell Brissy with Kleiner Associates, project manager on the fire station project. Just wanted to stand up here, give you guys an update on that change order, kind of run through the major item on it, and see if there's any questions regarding the change order. So the change order number one for the fire station project includes change request number one through change request number six. Of those, there is a deduct and a credit back for a portion. There is a zero cost change and a couple other smaller items. But the biggest, biggest item is change request number six for $394,988.14. Change request, or change request number six on this change order number one is in relation to the over excavation of unknown material underneath of the floor of the previous DOT building, as well as the expanded area around the previous DOT building. So the, I guess, the short summary of the, of the, of the information is the building was sitting on top of more than half of this material. As such, you know, we can't see through the floor and under the deep of the building or really do, do testing of material underneath. The other half of the material was basically, as it expanded away from the previous DOT building, we kept going as we kept finding the material, and then we stopped at the new exterior wall of the new station. That material had a lot of voids and holes. It had a mixture of sand and concrete chunks and asphalt chunks, some pieces of steel and pipe, and some other debris in there. It did not seem that it was material from the fire, from the previous school building on the site. It seemed more like at some point that, that organic material would and material from that fire would have been removed, and somebody at, over some point in history, since the early 1900s, had filled that in with something else. Yeah, it's kind of a dumping area. That material was approximately four, three or four feet below the current ground level there. So again, you would have had to dug pretty deeply to even discover and find some of that material, and it extended for roughly seven feet down to what would have been the basement floor of the old school building. So the work in that started approximately on May 23rd, when we started to remove some of that material and completed on June 4th. And again, we limited that scope to just be what was underneath of the new fire station area in order to avoid differential settlement or movement of the new fire station and damaging of that structure or future problems.
Excuse me, just, is that the reason for removing it? Because there was a building there prior. It didn't seem to have.
Correct. Yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, so the, the existing DOT building was a, was a smaller, lighter weight, one-story building. And there were some issues with some settlement on the roof and a door in the rear of the building that was having difficulty opening. After knowing now and finding this material, it's believed that those, those issues with that DOT building are probably likely caused by the settlement of that, that material. And then with the new fire station, we're going back on with a taller and heavier structure than that lighter wood frame structure, so concern there. And I guess basically that's, that's the, that's the biggest extent for that material. So that cost includes removal of that old material, appropriate disposal of that material, bringing in new suitable low-volume change material so that the construction could continue, and then compaction of that material in place. I guess I'll open it up. I don't know if there's any, counsel has any questions on that, or if there's anything can help answer.
Guess I'd make the motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Okay, been moving seconded to approve the change order.
And this is what we had previously discussed a lot, right?
Any further questions? Seeing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Kness? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Next up is the consideration of grant application for the public restroom.
Hi, guys. No photos today. So you may remember that I wanted to seek approval to apply for the Washington County Riverboat Foundation grant. And that's just one of, a number of grants. I would come back to this body each time I find a grant that seems to be a good fit, but perhaps just one at a time.
And how much do you tend to apply for?
After reviewing the three grants that were awarded in the lifetime of the foundation and checking out the Chautauqua Park that was recently built for half a million, I think reducing it from 500 million to 350 million, 500,000 to 350,000 would be appropriate, given there's infrastructure, sewer plumbing and power already at the public restroom. If 350,000 isn't enough to build a new one, it would certainly be enough to remodel the existing structure. So for those reasons, I'm just going to be seeking that amount.
So what is the, what is the application proposing? A new building or a remodeled building? A new building or a remodeled building? I would think that the grant would require you to distinguish.
Yes, so we stand a greater chance to get the funds if we just remodel it. So I would say just remodeling it. I don't see any long list of downsides to that because I don't think there are very many unknowns. We know it needs new everything except the infrastructure. The brick seems to be in good condition, so keeping that makes sense. I think if we built a new one, it would cost more and that I just can't see them funding it. It would be too outside of their norm.
I don't have much experience with writing the grants. Are they going to require estimates prior to submission of the grant?
Yeah, I think so. You have to submit a.
It's kind of what I would think.
Plan on how the money's to be spent and in detail, maybe with drawings and, you know, give them an idea of the context of the.
Look at who we'd like to request that from and I would go back to the committee and, I mean, I imagine that they would want to talk to Charles Voorhees and.
I guess before we approve an amount or something like that, I guess we kind of need to know exactly what we're talking and what the cost will be of the project.
I can't, I can't do that.
Right, but I mean, if we get the estimates first. Yeah, I think, I think you're going to probably have to have the estimates before we can move forward with, am I?
So I don't have.
My personal preference would be to see the application before it gets submitted.
And the applications are, can be.
Seek estimates. Seek estimates before it gets submitted.
When are they due?
The application, actually.
They start accepting applications August 1st.
With the rolling application.
Not sure what the deadline is on that.
It's a rolling application.
I think it's spring and fall, isn't it?
Spring and fall. Let's see, I was going to answer the, so typically when I talk to Charles Voorhees, they want to know what the budget is and then they draw the plans. So I can tell you the budget would be 350,000. So then with that, there might be things that are de-scoped. But if that is sufficient money to remodel the bathroom and give it all of the five-star experience that we're hoping to give it, then that would be great.
Is there a match required by the city?
I don't think so. Who has experience with, you guys have more experience than I do with the Washington.
Melanie has done the riverboat.
Yeah, but I've never gone.
Did they request matching?
No.
No match, okay.
But that doesn't stop us from seeking donations from private citizens. If, for example, we get 250 from them, and I don't know, is that, is that even a thing? Do they say, you know, we see your application, but we're only going to grant this amount?
My experience has been that they grant all or none.
Okay.
But I don't know that, I don't know that's 100%.
It depends on what their culture is and depends on the kinds of projects they typically get. A lot of times if you don't fund them fully, the grant can't be executed.
So far we've been on the none side, so you be the first. You be the first, that'd be great.
Well, luckily there are other grants, so we'll just, we'll see. I'm attracted to this one because it just seems reasonable. They give away such huge grants for this kind of thing and, I mean, it's just, yeah.
In Washington County.
In Washington County, yes.
Sorry, that was a little dig.
I know, I mean.
That was a little public dig.
Oh, it's had one more question. So are you the applicant or is the city going to be?
The city is the applicant.
Okay, counsel, so is there?
So we get it, city.
Is there a motion to approve this or do you want to see something more at the next meeting before she puts this in?
I'd like to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I'm okay with that. I'll second.
Okay, so Elizabeth, you made a motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and I think I heard Caness, second.
Doug actually did.
Doug did, okay. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded to approve the application for 350,000 to Washington Riverboat.
Having said that, we would like to see the application or at least the estimates with maybe drawings.
Yep, yep, I'll be back. And I do want feedback. I don't want to just go, this is what we're doing, you guys have nothing to say about it. Really important that we, we all love it.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Go ahead and call the roll. Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, approved unanimously. Okay, great, thanks, Deb.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next is consideration of purchase, purchase of budget equipment in the water department.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by.
Recommendation GMC, I presume.
Yes.
Moved by Caness, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of award a bid of sale of city asset, which is the wheel loader.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Esti, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I was, there was no link on the one that we were provided. What did it?
There is now.
It just shows $55,000 as the sale price.
Minimum bid and then sale price. It was 55, 500.
Sorry, we have the bid opening at 3:00 this afternoon. Like we were a little late. So it looks like there was only one.
If you read the minutes on Saturday, you might miss some things.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not, please call the roll. Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration of set public hearing on the matter of North Campus Ridge planned unit development for Monday, July 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Caness. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Okay, next action item, consideration, oh, here we are, to direct city clerk to publish a notice of appointment of vacant council seat. So the code, the Iowa code says a vacancy in elective city office during a term of office shall be filled at the council's option by one of the two following procedures. Talks about appointing, if you're going to appoint someone, that you should appoint someone within 60 days. And then if the council chooses to proceed under this paragraph, it shall publish notice in the manner described by section 362.3, stating the council intends to fill the vacancy by appointment, but that electors of the ward, city or ward, in this case it's the ward, have the right to file petition requiring the vacancy be filled by special election. So here's the thing. It's such a short time, in my, in my feeling, until November.
I was going to say, before you defend one position, could you tell us the other choice? There are two choices. One is to do an appointment, the other one is?
To do a special election. So the special election will cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars.
Probably like 10 to 12, 15.
And we have an election in November. So I think it would be great if we found someone to fill in for three months and then it opens it up. That person may not want to continue.
It could even be a condition of their appointment, possibly. I'm not saying it could be, it should be, but it could be.
When, when is that, when does that seat do up for election on normal?
Normal, 2028.
2028, okay.
So the next, the person who would be elected in November would have basically two years to finish that term.
So what I was saying, Mary, is someone could agree to accept an appointment, but also agree not to run. That's what I'm saying, that is possible. I'm not saying we want to do that.
Can you do that?
I don't think so.
Can you contract with someone and say that they cannot run?
Contract, they can tell you they won't.
They can still run opposed, though, I mean.
They can tell you. I'm just saying, they can tell you they're not going to run and they can, you know.
So.
Well, just one point, the, so you think it might cost $10,000 or $12,000 for an election?
I would say, yeah.
For citywide?
I mean, I haven't been the county treasurer since 2018 and they cost 12 to 15 back then.
That's for a citywide election?
Yeah, yeah. That was for a city special election.
Right, involving the entire city, not just one ward.
Not necessarily, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I asked the auditor's office the cost and they said it'd be $2,000 or $3,000.
I'd be surprised by that, but maybe. You said you did ask them?
I did ask.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said we should. I got it.
I thought it would be more than that.
Well, just for a ward, so we need a couple hundred.
Well, that's true, but also I think there are good people that would probably do it for, you know, the three months and then it goes, they can run if they choose, but we have someone sitting in the seat right away, if we can find someone.
Since city council is the decision-making organ for the entire city government, I do think it is worth the money to hold a special election, so I am going to make my motion.
Okay, make your motion.
Special election.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
So what are we gaining by holding a special election? How much time are we talking that we're actually gaining? I mean, if we hold a special election, somebody will be seated by when?
I believe the auditor's office has a minimum of 32 days to even get the ballot ready.
Okay.
I'm not sure when they actually set the actual date, but then you're looking at August, September instead of the November election. But really, if you appoint now.
We have somebody in a seat now.
Somebody in the seat and you wait for the November election for, to have it on the ballot, because it would be on the November election.
So if we had a special election, we'd be gaining somebody in the seat for roughly six weeks.
Well, after the election for the ward three on the regular, they could take seat as soon as the county certifies the vote, so late November.
The special election, if there were a special election, the elected official would be served until when? The end of the term?
Yes.
The end of the remaining term, remaining term.
Oh, I got you.
Two and a half years.
Okay.
And the election in November is more than 90 days after the vacancy.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there more information? I mean, I don't know that we have to make the decision tonight, but it would be interesting to know how much it would actually cost.
I would like to know that, too. Not that I doubt you, but I just, like, if we know exactly how much it's going to cost, sorry.
When, and when actually the election would take, when a special election would take place, if there were one?
Because.
Okay, I asked the auditor's question, that question also. And she told me it would be $2,000 to $3,000 and the election would take place at the end of August or beginning of September.
And if there was.
Just let Rebecca.
Right, if there were a special election, that person would be elected to fulfill the remainder of the term until the next regular election for that particular seat, which is going to be two years. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't know when her term expires. It should be.
Term expires.
2028, 2020, yeah.
Yeah, so three more years, basically.
The next election will be in November of 2027.
Seven.
All right, two.
So two years.
Two years and two.
But it also gives the opportunity for third ward residents to pick their own representative, which I think is worthwhile.
Okay, so it's, it has been moved and seconded to have a special election. So any further discussion?
I don't, personally, I don't see an issue. I was appointed to fill a vacancy.
Exactly.
So there's another argument to have an election. So, but that's Mayor Malloy's fault, not mine, so. I don't see an issue with it either way, to be honest with you, so.
How does that process work? Do people throw their name in the hat? Do you?
For what, appointment?
Mm-hmm.
On, on mine, he asked 72 other people and they said no, and then he asked me, so.
You know, I, personally, I think if anybody knows somebody in third ward, I think you ask, engage interest. From time to time, I ask people if they would ever be interested, just to get them thinking. I had asked, just so you know, I had asked someone just even this last week, someone I had talked to two or three years ago, and he ended up telling me, no, he didn't have any interest. And it's not that you would appoint him. If we had two or three people, the council could talk to those people and see who they want. But, so I think we just do the vote and see if it goes up or down.
So just a comment here.
Yeah.
I think the shortcoming of that, of that approach is we talk to the people we know and that's a very small fraction of the people who live in third ward.
I, I don't think, well, sometimes that's true and sometimes you know of people. The person that I asked, I don't know him.
Right.
Like, he's not my social friend or anything like that. It's someone who I have respect for, I think he's a good thinker, he's a kind person, he's a good person, he's a hard worker. Those are the things I know about him. And so I feel like, in the times when I've seen people be appointed, it's not, it's not their best buddy, so.
Well, and I guess too, Doug, like, what is your expectation of how you're going to get better applicants from the election process? Because again, everyone doesn't read the paper, like, it's not necessarily covered, you know, I mean, we're still up against that, like, lack of communication. How do you see it being a better process to get the information out there? So then those people have to print out those papers, they have to go around the community and get signatures in their ward. It's a much, you know, it's harder on those people to actually do it than if they just showed up at city hall and they were like, I'll volunteer. They have to get signatures to do it.
I guess.
If it's an election.
The number of signatures they get is pretty trivial, I think it's.
I understand that, but it's still an effort.
Don't you want that?
But we want people to show an effort that they want to be there.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just saying, you know, when we've, for the last four weeks, been talking about how we can't get the information out there, I don't see how the election's going to be more fruitful of people that are going to run compared to.
Well, I don't know if you're talking about not getting the information out there. The information is out there, is what people look at it.
Correct.
I think if somebody's interested, if somebody's interested, they will look. And I think that's probably the kind of person you want to be.
And the point is here, the reason I put this action item on is not that I have someone to appoint. You know, I was hoping we would eventually get one here in the next couple of weeks. And then if, if we do, then this still allows this to be out there and if the, if the citizens in Ward Three want a special election, they get one. So, so at this point, we do have a motion on the floor, so let's vote it up or down.
Okay, so my last point would have been that I don't think we've ever had a special election for a vacant seat before.
Oh, really?
So this might be a nice experience to see just what kind of reaction we get from that, this Ward Three in particular in this case.
The other advantage, too, is you're not necessarily maybe thinking you're choosing a better candidate one way or the other, but you're, at least you're allowing Ward Three to choose their representation. So.
I mean, to me, you know, there's lots of people here that probably know people in Ward Three. It's not, it's not a matter of.
The number out of Ward Three that would have to sign a petition asking for a special election if the council appoints, you know that figure, don't you?
Yes, it's 27.
27 people would have to sign and say they would prefer to have a special election instead of allowing the appointment to carry through.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so let's go ahead and.
I would like to know exactly how much it's going to cost, though.
Okay, well, we've got a, we've got a.
$2,000 to $3,000, is that what you said?
That's what the auditor's office told me.
That seems like a reliable source.
Yeah. Yeah, they would know. That's who we'd pay for the election.
I mean, I talked to the person who runs the elections. You probably know her.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, then, let's take no, uh, I guess no action on the next, the next item, okay?
It's good transparency.
Okay. Are you talking about the direction to do the appointment of the, that action?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, next action item is consideration of approval of final completion and authorization of final payment of san- sanitary sewer step three improvements, bid package number one lift station. Melon?
Um, so I don't have this printed out, so don't ask me any specific numbers on it. Uh, the only thing I do want to point out is that, um, we are some time from, since the contract completion date, I believe the contract completion date was in May, um, when the final walkthroughs were done on this project, there were some issues with being able to pull or remove the pumps for the lift station. Um, and so the contractor, and, um, that's when you do some change orders, or not change orders, but, uh, change during construction and put an HVAC unit above rather than off to the side, um, there's some clearance issues, and, um, so the contractor, um, on their cost, uh, made those changes, but we told them we weren't going to close out the contract until, uh, those changes were made. Um, otherwise, the city's had full operation of the lift station, um, there was no real damage to the city for them not getting done, um, on the contract completion date. So with this, um, recommendation, um, to accept the final completion, we are not recommending any liquidated damages, um, because the contractor was, um, making the necessary, um, repairs on, um, at their cost, no cost to the city.
And move to approve? Second.
Move by Caness, second by Estee, any further discussion? Now please call the roll.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ordinance 1266, this is the third and final reading, uh, regarding sewer fee amendments, proposed fee schedules.
Um, one quick amendment that we've made since last reading is that we want, um, they're going to make those effective October 1, um, allowing some time to allow our waste haulers, um, to be notified of the proposed changes, so, um, a change from the last reading, and that's in that ordinance that's in front of you.
Okay, great. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Estee?
Second.
Second by Tohill? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you, that was proved unanimously. Uh, and then, uh, this is the first reading for, uh, the ordinance of consideration of amendment to grass and vegetation.
Um, so we just made some changes to this, but when we made the change, um, allowing us to post a notice on the property, um, we took out all, uh, reference to mailing notices to property owners. Um, we would like still the opportunity to have, um, both options. Um, the procedure is to, um, post those to, uh, the residential properties and mail them to the commercial properties. Um, Adam Melcher, who has been filling in on code compliance, is doing a great job. He's got a lot of contacts in the city and, um, notifying landlords, even, um, though the procedure is to, again, tag those residential areas, he's making contact with landlords and, um, again, following both, uh, or, um, tagging and mailing, and, uh, so we want to make sure that we are meeting our code requirements, and we'd like that option put back into the code, please.
I made the motion that we move, um, the ordinance consideration of amendment to grass vegetation from the first to the second reading.
Okay, so, hold that motion. I'm going to open the public hearing, does anybody want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we do have one person.
Keith, we'll add a more. I just have a question about the existing ordinance, and I do not have that in front of me, so I'm going to paraphrase since we are looking at changes in that. Uh, the last sentence in that ordinance talks about if the, if the person who has, where do I want to put this? Their property to be cleaned up by the city, whatever it is, and they don't do it, such as vegetation and grass, it says the adjacent property owner can be responsible, if I'm reading that right.
What section are you in? That doesn't make sense.
That's Section Four.
This right here, abutting property owner?
Yeah. I, the abutting property owner shall become liable for the cost and expense of subsequent removals.
And I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, excuse me, so this particular section is about shrubs, plants, and flowers in the right-of-way. So when it's talking about abutting property owner, it would be the property owner that, um, has the property in front of the right-of-way, that, or adjacent to, so by abutting property owner, it's not meaning that you're responsible for your neighbor's property, it's, it's the right-of-way in front of your property.
It's next to your curb or next to your sidewalk.
Yeah.
The piece that runs along your property line?
Yes.
In the front of the building.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Maybe if that could be rewritten or something, so it doesn't be too ambiguous about abutting property.
Gotcha, yeah, so that it's not, that you're not in charge of your neighbors. Well, we would, it would be a lot easier for code compliance if everyone was responsible for their neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and Doug, you want to restate your motion?
Sure.
Please?
I'll make the motion to, uh, move the ordinance consideration of amendment to grass vegetation from the first to the second reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, uh, again, we do have a regular election this fall, uh, in November, and the wards that are open, the positions that are up for reelection, or election, I should say, are Ward Two, Ward Four, At-Large, which is now held by Doug Flornoy, and the mayor's position. So, Two, Four, At-Large, and the mayor, so those are the ones that are open for regular election in November. And so papers have to be, um, taken out and returned, I think it's August 28th, I think. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't, I forgot to write it down, so double-check that, but, um, I have it in there, but I didn't bring it in here. Um, and then this last week, uh, we, a delegation has gone to Des Moines twice for Thriving Iowa Communities and Main Street, and, you know, Ed Malloy went, Paul Gandy went, I went, Mendy McAdams, um, Faith went to Juan, Faith Reeves, um, oh, who else? Oh, Mandy Ford, Deb Williamson, anyway, I would say both of those were presentations I thought were very successful, thought they were good presentations, and we hope to hear from them soon. Anything that you want to say, Paul?
Well, I wanted to say, yeah, Terry Baker also went, the executive director of the Fairfield Conventions Bureau. I think it's really, uh, these are shining examples of, uh, this is almost a Hackney phrase, or Hackite phrase, I don't know exactly how you pronounce it, of public-private partnerships actually working, it's government doing good by being good, and working with private enterprise, with education, with all different components of parts of our society to actually do something that we're all going to benefit from. So you'll be hearing more about Thrive Iowa, Thriving Iowa Communities, we hope, very soon, in a positive way, and also about Main Street in a very positive way, that's going to enliven and, and, and bring more prosperity and, and more good to, to our city. So it's really a very good example, to me, of good governance.
Thank you. Yep, so, keep our fingers crossed. Okay, city attorney report.
Yes, um, two or three things. We are working on a, a property with a lady named Connie Bryant, who has received a property, uh, through an estate, uh, there is a lien against it, we're attempting to get somebody with some authority from Discover Credit Card to determine whether we can get rid of that nine-year-old lien, uh, and if so, it appears this could go the same way as Kevin Franklin's property over on Sixth Street, that is now the pro- in the process of having a, um, Prison Industries home come in and, um, improve the property. So we'll have more on that. Right now, this doesn't seem to be unusual, that some of these properties, uh, that come out of an estate may have an lien, uh, but at the same time, uh, if you confront the lien holder and it's old, and it hasn't been enforced, it's probably because they don't want to spend any money on money, that they might not get enough to recover their interest in anyway. So, uh, we're hopeful about that. Secondly, um, there is something going on at the corner of Second and Harrison, uh, we've had communications with a, um, owner of the house down there, which has now been sold on contract, and so we've got a contract buyer that we're also putting in the loop as far as additional notice, but that house has a, uh, longstanding encroachment, um, that results from years of the house, uh, essentially, uh, probably being a little bit off-site as far as the 60-foot-wide street right-of-way, and where the boundary is to the south of the house on the property. The city curb, uh, going forward from what we've had surveyed over there now, and we did the survey with the, uh, agreement of the prior contract seller, prior owner, um, is now marked with pink, um, survey flags, and it's very clear that, uh, we're close to the buildings on the property by the time we have determined where the city right-of-way line is. So, uh, it's a situation where, uh, basically, the engineer, and myself, and the administrator, uh, have looked at this from a standpoint of, um, this has been allowed to exist for a couple decades, uh, at the same time, but it's been allowed to exist, um, there's a large pine tree that has gotten much larger, but they've also trimmed the lower branches to avoid visibility obstruction, but at the same time, there's a six-foot fence, uh, that didn't always used to be a six-foot fence, and then there's a box built around the base of the tree that protrudes out in farther in the encroachment area. So, uh, we've sent a second, uh, line of communication to the new contract buyer proposing that, uh, the city delegation go down and walk the site as far as the new survey markers, and see what we can come up with as far as what looks like a solution that was talked about with the former owners before the contract sale. And that was basically going to be to, uh, propose lowering the six-foot fence to a three-foot fence that would be a picket fence, and you would have some visibility through the fence, plus over the fence at half its height. Uh, the box would be done away with as far as the box built around the pine tree's base, uh, that is definitely an encroachment that's been enlarged, uh, over the past couple decades, uh, without any permits from the city. Uh, and then, at the corner, uh, there may be a part of that fence that's still not going to work, and there are some DOT rules, uh, and some rules of the road in the Iowa, uh, uh, rules of the road for, uh, taking a driver's license, for instance, that have to do with triangulation of vision at corners. It's also part of our city code as far as triangulation of vision at corners. It can be a reason for making people cut down their hedges if they're obstructing a view at an intersection. So, uh, that being said, um, the survey pins and flags at this point, um, uh, they haven't been extended all the way across the street of the intersection on the north side of Second Street, where, uh, we believe there may be some vision issues, uh, and, uh, the odds are, if we walk it, uh, if we do cite, uh, on-site, uh, triangulation, that we'll probably see whether we need to make some adjustments on the western side of the property fence to make sure that we have a triangulated view of that intersection for cars that are coming through at a fairly quick clip on Harrison Street. Harrison Street doesn't have any stop signs east-west from Main Street all the way over to Sixth Street, so you get some traffic moving through there, 25 to 35 miles an hour, probably realistically, and you have the potential for, uh, intersection accidents if people aren't paying attention, or if people just can't see, and that's been the complaint from some people in the neighborhood down on Second Street. So we're hopeful we can get this resolved with, uh, a suggested fence adjustment, uh, and, uh, a suggested, uh, the tree has been trimmed by the owners, they've cut all the branches that would hang down anywhere into eight to 10 feet off the ground, so it still looks like a pine tree, but it's been trimmed up quite a bit, and the box that was built around the tree for whatever purpose back when it had branches all the way down to the ground, uh, that's going to, no matter what the solution is, have to go, it encroaches no matter what. The city, uh, once we spot an encroachment and we survey it, and something is in the right-of-way, uh, and is a risk, uh, we have a right to go in and, uh, basically, uh, cure the problems in our own right-of-way, or we're liable. So, uh, this is something that has been a long time coming, but at this point, I think there's a, uh, a way to fix this, and we'll try to report to you that we've had that conversation with the new contract buyer-owner between now and the next, uh, council meeting, so.
Just to add, John, if I may, um, there's street parking on the south side of Harrison from Second to I don't know how many feet before the stop sign on Main Street, there's often trucks, trailers, I mean, it's, it's a very heavily parked block, and so that, I mean, that adds to the danger.
Yeah, I drive it every day, and sometimes you just have to stop and wait your turn to go through the gap.
It was especially noticeable when, we know when the Fillmore intersection was closed. It's not as bad now, but taking kids to school is always a fun thing.
All right, well, we'll report more to you on that, uh, next council meeting, I'm fairly optimistic that, uh, we'll have a good, uh, discussion, and maybe that will be resolved. Uh, wanted to mention a couple other things that I'm keeping track of, just because we're going into fall, we're in a new fiscal year, sometime this fall, you will pass, or I will ask you to pass, and the city administrator and the mayor will, uh, present this, but, uh, every year you have to renew the policies that we base our, uh, major financing on, uh, and that includes about 20 different policies that have to do with everything from EEOC and nondiscrimination and, uh, different kinds of Davis Bacon rules, uh, that apply to labor law with our projects and so forth, but having said that, and that there's about 20 of these policies, when they roll out on the table, a couple of them are going to be, uh, labeled something that has to do with DEI, which there is an executive order from the president right now that DEI is a bad thing. The only problem is Congress hasn't had a chance to say anything about that, and Congress hasn't repealed the federal laws on nondiscrimination related to gender, and so I'm treating it as though that's still a law that applies in the real world and in the finance world. So when we get to those points this fall, uh, I'm going to try to have some more information about what has come down the pike as far as any DEI rulings that have been through court, because I think we still have to stick with our DEI policies, and the other things that we have as far as non-gender discrimination, uh, that we've reported to the federal government every year in support of the financing we continue to receive, uh, and, uh, regardless of some of these executive orders, uh, these orders are pretty much untried orders that have been denied about 95% of the time, uh, by the federal courts. So our position as far as things that we have to talk over with Piper Jaffrey when they come down here to tell us, this is important to your, uh, financing status, and this is important to your contracts that you have for these projects, like what we just did tonight with Step Three, uh, we have to pay attention to all of those rules unless Congress has changed them. So I'm, I'm going to probably sound like some kind of political soapbox to you until this gets resolved, but right now, uh, our posture on DEI is we haven't changed anything since. But right now, our posture on DEI is we haven't changed anything since the last policy statement we made over all of the different things we have to have for federal funding. And it's going to stay that way unless there's a different court ruling. So, having said that, I'll leave it alone except you're going to hear probably about once a month something as far as where that's going now. Other thing is I just wanted to mention, we had a discussion on our study group tonight about LMI funds. And LMI funds are something that are in all of our TIF summaries as far as our plans that go along, the documents that support a new TIF district and how those funds are going to work. The LMI part of it goes back to the first TIF we had here in the city and it's been there ever since. And when we did a TIF for the Park Place, which we really didn't have to sell bonds for, we did agree that a partial part of the subdivision would include LMI housing. We say something to that effect that some of the TIF funds, each time we have a new tax increment finance, district or a new tax increment plan or program or booklet, whatever we want to call it with a particular project, when we say that we include LMI in it, we've built a fairly substantial LMI fund and this is out there available. And the legislature's been messing around rewriting a little bit of it, but it's pretty much a situation where there was some discussion in the study group about Chapter 403 and public purpose. 403 is also an area of the code that is talked about urban blight as one of the public purposes as well as economic development as one of the public purposes that you can use LMI funding for. So, urban blight fits in nicely. There was a three-page article in Des Moines Register on Sunday about ways that they're dealing in Des Moines with blighted property and deteriorating property and other things, including paragraph after paragraph discussions about LMI money being used to help with deteriorating properties and so forth. So, going forward with the idea of LMI money being out there, it's going to be nice to have some money like that that may go towards some of the things that have to do with deteriorating properties because it's clear that other communities with bigger blights than we've got are using it exactly for that purpose. So, we'll bring some of that back to you as far as LMI. The other good thing that I noticed as far as our recent financing, including the things that we did in approving the Step Three tonight and the financing we did last time on the $8 million of general obligation bonding related to the fire station and a couple other things that are thrown in there, is we've retained, and believe me, I've been worried about what we were going to retain or not after they started messing with House File 718 a couple of years ago, but we have retained our A-plus rating, which is the highest rating we can have for a town our size. So, that's good news from a Piper Jaffrey-type standpoint with people that come down here to offer to sell our bonds for us, but it's also good news for us as far as going after these projects and seeing what we can have as far as a grant and whether we look like the most worthy community for that. So, I'm very happy about the fact that we retained the A-plus. I'm also very happy that they aren't messing too badly with 718. There was another bill up there, I think 428 this spring, that was going to try to throw some extra things in on what they were already doing with 718. Communities our size, we don't need that. So, let's hope the legislature is content to be where they are as far as all of the savings that they are proclaiming and that they're not trying to save any more money at our expense. Right now, it's good that we've retained our rating. It's good that where we are as far as public finance, both as far as the TIFs that we're doing right now and the financing we've got on projects that are already approved by the voters. So, other than that, I won't say anymore.
Okay. Thanks, John. Committee and board reports.
Yes, we've had three meetings. The ad hoc committee has had three meetings so far.
Do you provide notice for these meetings?
Huh?
Is there a notice provided for these meetings?
Of course.
How is a notice provided?
By the regular mechanism that Rebecca uses.
So, it's on the calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, make sure, okay.
And the idea is to have them going forward on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. So, normally, they would follow a city council meeting, but this month, the second Thursday came before the council, first council meeting, which was last Thursday.
In there at Walton Lake?
Yes, they're currently being held at Walton Lake Golf Club.
Okay.
I have the minutes for the first two meetings ready for you, but there was an edit issue. I didn't get the final copy till late Friday, and so, they'll be on the next agenda. If you want me to send them to you sooner than that, I can do that. Is that a yes, you want that?
Yes. When you provide the minutes, when you provide the minutes, yeah, that's it.
The two weeks that we've had.
I suspect you're giving a report now or is that?
No.
Okay, okay.
We only had three motions and two of them were to adjourn.
Well, you know, get that one right, it's very important. So, my thought, and I asked the mayor to put this on the agenda beginning, I think to be, for the benefit of the public, for clarity, I think the committee name ought to be different than what we're showing on the agenda. The agenda shows Ad-Hoc Committee for Community Engagement. And in referencing the motion that was part of the, that was approved in our, I believe, our second June city council meeting, the motion was, that created this committee, was to create an ad hoc committee to communicate with Walton Lake residents on the bridge replacement project with council members Flornoy and Rowe.
That's the minutes, the motion she wrote down, right?
Right. So, that's the motion. So, that would suggest to me that the name of the committee can and should be more relevant or related to the motion itself. So, I'm proposing that the name of the committee should be Temporary Ad-Hoc Committee-Walton Lake Project.
Okay. So, did you read the paragraph before that motion?
I read a lot of things before that motion, but the motion says...
Connie, you had it.
Create an ad hoc committee to communicate with Walton Lake residents.
Right. That wasn't my motion though, actually.
But that's the motion that we agreed to.
In the minutes, but...
Right. So, that's the motion we have to go upon. That's the record, right?
Well, the motion we voted on is the one Doug actually made at the meeting. The motion recorded in the minutes is worded differently, but that's, I guess, that's the way the minutes were recorded. But the motion we all voted on was the one that Doug spoke out loud at the meeting, which was what I was voting on.
What was it?
I was going to ask Connie to read it because she had it.
So, the prior paragraph, Councilmember Flornoy commented, "They've heard a lot about lack of transparency, lack of communication, lack of community involvement, notification, timelines and manner in which decisions are made. Suggest an ad hoc committee for two council members to meet with the Walton Lake community individuals during the lifetime of this project to work on those issues and look for solutions and ways of implementing change in the way council and community interact and communicate. Initially, it would dissolve at the conclusion of this project unless there is some value seen in continuing it in some other fashion." And...
I think I said there, so that's my motion.
Yeah, that's, okay. I think Rebecca for this, this is a very good summary of that paragraph, succinct, right? For the life of the project, correct? Two ad hoc, two members to communicate with Walton Lake residents, right?
Community.
Right, communicate, right. So, that's what it says here, to communicate.
Community.
Excuse me.
Walton Lake community, community, individuals, residents.
The emphasis I understood in what Doug was saying was that the committee was meant to address the issues of transparency and lack of communication and so on.
At Walton Lake?
No.
No.
But it says...
That's what Rebecca wrote down, but that's what I said.
No, no, no. She just read the paragraph, you said the read, and it said Walton Lake. That's what it said.
Walton Lake was the context that these issues have arisen most recently in, which is why that was relevant in the discussion, but...
Which is why it also was in the motion.
My understanding is that the motion did say the committee would be tied temporally to the length of the project, but it wasn't referencing the contents of the committee's discussion. Contents of the committee's discussions was related to the subjects that Doug had mentioned.
Walton Lake during the life of the project, communicate.
During the life of the project.
Okay, well, that's what this is.
Yeah, during the life of the project, that's a time period, whereas the content of what it was...
Correct, that's why we say temporary.
Yeah.
And it referred to Walton Lake twice. And we always were talking about, I remember the discussion, we were always talking about Walton Lake.
We were also talking about communication issues.
Walton Lake, communicate with Walton Lake community, right?
Other members of council, do you have a feeling one way or the other?
I guess I don't understand what the concern is.
The concern, my concern is something called mission creep. Here is a committee that specifically was voted upon by the council to address issues of communication with Walton Lake residents regarding the Walton Lake project during the duration of that project. That was the motion, that was the formation of the committee, that's its charge. It was not to, what we have here is something that suggests it's community-wide, it isn't. They meet at Walton Lake, they discuss Walton Lake. It's narrower than what they're suggesting. So, if we would want something else, that's for another time, but right now, the committee was charged, the motion was made, and I think we ought to accurately reflect the motion, the name of the, the name of the committee. The problem is if you don't, you're going to end up with discussions that are not relevant to the motion itself, the actual formation of the committee.
Do you know of any specific instruction, I mean, discussions that are not relevant? I'm just curious, what does the committee discuss then?
Well, we're going to find out, I think, because we're going to have minutes, but I just want to be sure, starting now, the best way is to start well begun is half done. So, we want to start with a clear understanding of what the committee was formed to do and what the period of time the committee was formed for. And it was clearly formed to have discussions about communication regarding Walton Lake for the duration of the project. So, that's what it says.
Rebecca, did you listen to the YouTube recording of the minute, or the meeting and verbatim wrote down what I said or did you do it from memory?
The paragraph before...
Yeah.
Is basically what you had said.
So, it's not verbatim?
No.
Okay.
And it's normally or not verbatim.
No, I understand that, but this particular section that he's pointing to...
It's a summary of the motion.
Appears to be a verbatim quote, and I don't think it's accurate.
Are you saying that the intent...
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it accurate or is it verbatim or no?
It's not verbatim, no.
So, are you saying that the intention of the committee is not to just talk about Walton Lake? What is the intent of the committee then? Because I also was under the impression that it was just, it was linked to this particular project because it was about Walton Lake and you were talking about Walton Lake, which was, right?
Communications issue, well, it's a perfect model for understanding communication issues, transparency issues around a city project, this being a perfect example to use because there was so much contentiousness associated with it, people not feeling informed, people feeling left out. So, it's a good model to use to address broader issues like transparency and communication.
That was the motion and that's not what you stated.
Sorry?
That's not the motion and it's not what you stated.
No, but any question...
It's not a model, it's a motion. It's not a model for the entire community, it's for Walton Lake, which is fine. I think it's a good motion, I think it's fine, I supported it, but I don't want to see it expand to something that it isn't. If you want to expand it, that's another motion, that's another discussion. But right now, we're talking about Walton Lake for the duration of the project. That's what we voted upon. That's what the committee name should state.
Okay.
It's just matter, you're talking about, it's important to be clear, to be transparent, to communicate. These are all qualities that I think are going, are best expressed when we clearly, first of all, clearly delineate or dename what it is the committee is about. That's all.
I'm going to agree with Doug up to a point where it is a good basic or a good model. And next time a situation arises, we can create another committee based on that model. But I think this committee should be limited to that function out there because we were talking to residents from Walton Lake, this is what we were discussing, this is what we're under the intention of doing. I don't have any problem with creating another one if another issue arises down the road and we can use this as a model, but I don't think this one should continue to be the committee. I think it should end at the end of the project.
I understand what you're saying.
And then, we can create another one to discuss another project in the future, another issue in the future. But I think this one should be limited to discussions of Walton Lake.
Which it is, I mean, communication, you talk about the bridge problem and so, communication surrounding that would be the issue.
Then we just need to spell it out, I guess, in the name.
But I would expect it to evolve into something else.
No, 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 evolve, that's the problem.
Excuse me.
So, timeout. So, if we just add Ad-Hoc Committee for Community Engagement for Walton Lake, would that satisfy everyone?
No, rose by any of them then.
No.
Call it what you will.
It's a temporary committee, temporary ad hoc for Walton Lake project. That's what it is. It's not about, the word engagement was never used in the discussion. The words were communication, the words were transparency, the words were notification, the words were community involvement. Those are fine, I have no problem with that, but you start changing the words and adding words, then we're getting away from what we had the conversation about. So, why don't we just stay with the conversation, I think is a valid one, and just have the committee named that way.
Okay. So, people from outside of the Walton Lake community show up and want to participate in the meeting, are they allowed?
Well, it's an ad hoc committee, you give notice, the public is invited, like any other committee, of course, they're allowed.
So, we will engage the community?
The committee will be present and you'll be talking about Walton Lake project. That's what the committee is designed to do, right?
That's fine.
Ad hoc is like a temporary.
It is, yes.
I mean, like, you wouldn't say temporary ad hoc, that would be ridiculous. Well...
Yeah, I think, no, we're just, I think...
I would agree with ad hoc committee, that's fine. Ad hoc committee-dash is Walton Lake project. Ad hoc, yeah, ad hoc committee-dash Walton Lake project.
Are you okay with that, Doug?
I don't know, I just need a motion or a second vote on it.
Okay, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the roll. Andy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
No.
Rowe?
No.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four to two, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so that's resolved. And we'll see the minutes next, next meeting, I think that's fine. Doug? Yeah. Administrator and department reports.
I wanted to mention the ribbon cutting for Chitaco Park restrooms was on July 1st. So, if you haven't seen those yet, they are extremely nice. Then, I want to skip over that I've been getting some phone calls in regards to the brush site. And I think once I have a conversation with citizens, that they understand, but they can purchase tickets here at City Hall and then take it out to the street department or you can use, purchase the waste management bags or the grass clipping bags from Hy-Vee. And there's multiple other things, we also have some scheduled brush pickups that are on the website. And then, lastly, if you've got lots and lots and lots, you can also take it out to the Simcoe landfill. They charge, I think it's like $30 a ton if you've got like large amounts of trees and what have you.
Is that in Richland?
Yes. And so, we are, I mean, we're working on some alternative sites from what we used to have, but right now, it's a little inconvenient, but it's working. So, that's about, the last thing I've got is I did want to talk briefly about the July 11th scenario. And if you don't mind, I'd have Melanie, I wanted to give the council some insight of what really occurs behind the scenes when we do have events, storms and what have you. Ms. Melanie?
Yeah. You know, our council meeting is about two hours shorter than our last couple meetings, so we thought this was a good time to talk with council, show the public kind of some of the behind-the-scenes things that happen when we do have potential for an emergency event. I want to say that the city can't do what we do without emergency management. I will say I was, I had stuff going on and I, the... I will say, I was, I had stuff going on, and I, the severe storms were not on my radar, pun intended, and so Brett calls, called me shortly before one o'clock to let me know that we were moving into a risk three category, which the last, about, every time we are in a risk three category, there is an, at least an EF2 tornado in, somewhere in Jefferson County, or in the area. So even though weather predictions are not always accurate, the one through five ratings of the severe weather, we do take that pretty, pretty serious when we do get to that point. The biggest thing I wanted to point out is, you know, as staff and management, we were talking back and forth with Brett Farrell and the department heads off and on for about four hours during those storms, and one of the biggest things is, it's summer, the outdoor pool's out, or the outdoor pool is open, we have a lot of people who drop their kids off, we have a lot of daycare kids there, and myself and the assistant park and rec director, we had made the decision about an hour before the storms actually hit to go, that we were gonna close the pool. We didn't close the pool an hour early, but we were letting parents and the daycare know, we're gonna close this pool in an hour, allowing the daycare to walk back, kids to notify their parents, and, you know, got thirty to forty kids out of the building should there have been a direct hit inside city limits, you know. City has historically been fortunate in those situations, but again, we're getting those, getting people out of those city buildings, back to their homes, not having people, people and kids out on the street when those things are happening. And then, you know, again, just kudos to Brett Farrell, even as the storms continued, Brett stayed in contact with the front desk manager at Park and Rec, or had their contact information should the storms have continued, and we needed to get people to safety throughout the evening at Park and Rec, because it's the one, one city building that's open late into the evening. So again, just letting you know of kind of all the different things that happened kind of minute by minute as we go through the afternoon. Brett said that the tornado sirens, or the outdoor warning sirens, worked as they're supposed to, they did not go off in Fairfield, because they did not have those strong winds or the tornado in Fairfield. There was a tornado radar indicated near Agency, sirens went off in Agency and Batavia, and then there was one in southeast Jefferson County, not too far from my house, actually, and the sirens went off in Lockridge. So, you know, as a county, things went as they are prepared for.
Does every city have a emergency signal now?
No, there are a couple of communities in, within the county that don't have sirens, and Brett said, you know, he'd actually contacted the mayor of those communities that don't have them, saying, "You're under a tornado warning," right, at this point. And many of those, they push in those communities to make sure that all of the citizens, I mean, we make sure as many citizens as possible are signed up for Alert Iowa, but particularly in those smaller cities that don't have the sirens, they make sure that they get it, and he said the mayor of one of the towns goes, "Yep, my phone's going off right now, you're calling me, and it's going off letting me know of the tornado warning," so it was working out very-
So is it the city's responsibility to put up the siren, or is it EMAs?
I don't-
Does it automatically now?
Well, but no, for to pay for them, I would like Brett to give an official answer, but I believe that EMA funds pay for a portion of it, but the cities still have to kick in a portion, but I'll, I'll have Brett follow-
It's pretty much a mix, from my experience.
Yes, yeah. We talked about it today, but there, I don't, I want him to get an official answer on that one. Lastly, just a few things, though, that we did find that we would like to improve, already see that we have another set of severe storms planned, or on the schedule, or on the radar for Wednesday, right now sitting at a two, and, but continuing to get, promote people to sign up for Alert Iowa, we discussed maybe freshman orientation at the high schools, getting the freshmen, even though kids have phones at younger age, when you start to get to that freshman in high school, kids are driving themselves more, so encouraging those new users of cell phones to get signed up. We have, clarifying a few processes on the city side of things related to phone trees and after hour power outages, the traffic signals, and just a few things that we're gonna talk about on the staff level. If there is anything else that you guys saw during that, please talk to Doug or I. Again, we wanna make these improvements before they're needed, rather than after the fact, and that's why we kinda use this opportunity, this shorter council meeting, to review this with you guys.
Thank you.
I have a final thought, if you don't mind, that I appreciate Melanie, and I appreciate the police department, EMA, fire department, that our priorities as municipalities shift immediately when we have natural disasters, over, you know, my decades of working as an equipment operator and many, many disasters, the mentality that we have is, first, we stayed, we, we get alerted, we stage, and then the number one thing that I need is my resources to go home, and they need to get their houses in order, because if they come back, and they're, and they're here, and they're not working, trying to, and they're worried about their families, they're, they're not doing their job, so I need them to go home, figure that out, and I need them to come back when I call them, and they did just that, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, you made an executive decision.
I had-
For them to be safe, we appreciate that, yeah.
And, and so I can tell you that I got a phone call as a vehicle was going down the road, the transformers were actually blowing, that's why we didn't have power, then I started getting phone calls, and then I started making phone calls. Things work out smoothly, but having all the equipment in place the way they need to be, making sure that our emergency personnel are where they need to be, so that we can respond quickly, but then I also need them not to worry about their families, and they get that taken care of, because I've been in that situation where I'm out working, and then I'm worried about my kids' life, what have you, many floods, and many snowstorms, all sorts of things, so, and I've actually seen tornadoes that have wiped cities completely off the map, and, and I, you know, Melanie reminded me of that when this one came up, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and didn't really touch on it, so we have a, one of our procedures is when we do reach that three level of weather prediction, we've worked with our, our outdoor departments, the water sewer streets, airport, parks department, and if they're in a position, depending on the time of day, but, you know, this was 1:15 on a Friday afternoon, many of them are working summer hours where their end of their day is 2:30 to 3:30, and so we sent many of those departments home. If you look at the parks department and the streets department, they don't have a storm safe building anyway, so they don't need to be wrapping up the end of their day in one of those buildings anyway, get them home, we kind of, this started after the storms a couple years ago, we had an employee who was actually impacted by the storms, and, you know, really put it in perspective for us of, again, they can't help the city if they're, you know, dealing with stuff at home, and myself, I was in the EOC, and my kids are calling me, and, you know, I'm trying to help with the EOC, and my, I don't have my kids taken care of at home, so that's really where the city kind of changed our procedure regarding those storms, because we know that when, if it does, or when it does hit, that those employees will come back and take care of the city.
I mean, I know, well-
Thank you. Go ahead.
At my company party, I stopped in the middle of a cornhole game to leave because of the warning, we were told to leave a party, so we did it, too.
Sacrifice.
Must've been tough.
Yeah.
Because you were probably winning.
We were, actually, that's why I remember it. But I do have a couple questions, though, before we go, I wanna, about the administrator report. You, you noted on June 30th, the Walton Club, again, the Walton Club, the DNR hosted by the RAC presented their analysis of Walton Lake. As we shift our focus from repair, we now focus on the lake's health of a public waterway. I just wanna be clear, are we still doing the repair?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to point, ask, is, let me see if I can find it real quickly, again, Walton Lake administration has been working with engineers and the DNR to find alternative solutions to replace the access across Walton Lake without lowering the water to extreme levels. Engineers have made contact with a geotechnical engineer to provide calculations for adding larger rocks and conduct settlement testing. Are we looking at alternatives still, or have you not made a decision?
It's, no, it's-
Just different?
It's still the same design.
Okay.
It's just a different approach, and so the, the water levels, maybe, maybe not, we're not there yet.
Are we moving ahead? We're not moving ahead, I'm just confused, yeah.
Ms. Melanie?
Yeah.
So the current approach does not have the DNR drawdown permit, and so the, what's mentioned in the admin report is backfilling the opening within the, we call it the middle basin dam, backfilling that with rock material of various sizes, which would allow them to fill that opening without drawing the lake level all the way down, or down to the level that was discussed before. And so that's where the geotech, when that design was brought to the DNR dam safety, DNR dam safety wanted a geotechnical engineer to review it, and so that is where the geotech came involved, so that is being discussed because of the not having received the drawdown permit.
And they haven't refused it, they just haven't given it yet? Or have they refused it? Or-
Not sure how long it would take, will take to get it, and so pursuing the two paths, because I guess I, I think, I have concerns over whether the original path will get approved. I think eventually it will get there, but will it get there at a point, at a time that it will, you know, be next year, or at what point will it be approved? And so that's why we're looking at this, we'll bring an estimate to council, if council can say no, we'll keep pursuing the other option, but if the other option ever gets approved, we've gotta look at something additional.
This'll be a change order, then?
It would be a change order with Dresh, because we already have that contract signed, and so we can't-
And the purpose of this change order, well, origins is the city is reacting to residents' concern about lake level, and this model, or new, if the change order's implemented, it would require less lowering of the lake.
Well, I'm reacting to the DNR not approving the drawdown permit, how the council proceeds.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what the truth is, so-
Yeah.
It's because of DNR, DNR's reaction?
Yes.
Okay.
This does have the benefit of that it does not draw the lake down as much, but-
It's an accidental benefit.
Well, if DNR is not approving the drawdown permit because of the citizens' concerns, it's one and the same, so.
Okay, now I know something new, so they didn't approve it because of citizens' concerns?
They said they have received a lot of calls, I don't know if that's why they have not approved it, but they have told me that they have received a lot of calls.
I appreciate the clarification.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So then, to summarize for me to understand simply-
It's a bridge, right?
It's not being built yet, because?
The culverts?
Culverts, the culverts, not being built yet, because?
We do not have a DNR permit.
Okay, thank you.
And it could still come, but here's an alternative, so we're kind of waiting, and here's an alternative, and we'll see where it goes.
Yep, two tracks.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully by next time, we'll know something. Yeah, and just for those people, council members who weren't there for the Walton Lake, the meeting that the RAC put together with the DNR, it was very informative, and I thought, and what became clear to me was, at some point, that's probably, we wanna do restoration of that lake, but it takes a lot of planning, and it's not free, so yes, there are grants, but we're gonna have to come up with some money, so multi-year planning, no doubt. But again, it was real interesting, so. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded by Two Hill and Esti.
All the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, meaning adjourned, thank you.